It is 1:30, so we will call this meeting. All board members are present. We'll start with elementary school.
Yes, so first of all, I just want to say this is one of the two most favorite board meetings that I think all of us get to attend it. So Cassie, where are you? Mrs. Akerst, come on up and tell us what we've got going on at the elementary school and some exciting stuff.
You'll notice I have some special guests joining me today. Albert Einstein, Derek Jeter, and Dolly Carton. And we are excited to be here today to talk about one of our favorite traditions at Kingsville Area Elementary School, which is our wax museum. And so these three students have worked hard to get ready for the wax museum. And they have prepared a little presentation for you all and to describe all of the work that goes into the wax museum. The public is invited to the wax museum, and so they get to see the finished product. But there is a lot of work that goes into before the performance. And so they're going to share with you all the steps they took to get down to number seven, which is the performance. And then they will perform their speech about the person that they chose to do their wax museum project on. And then I will let them introduce themselves at the end. But for right now, we have Albert Einstein, Derek Jeter, and Dolly Carton with us. All right, so help us describe the wax museum. What are the steps that you took?
Literally had to read the book and learn about the person.
And so our library is filled with these books. Do you want to hold those up so they can see? They're the Who Was Chapter Books. And so they read the chapter books as part of their research. So our library has collected a lot of these books over the last few years as our wax museum continues to grow.
We fill up the packet and do our research.
And if something isn't in the book, what is another resource that you use?
The web.
The internet, yep, the web.
Number four?
And we wrote a speech on a piece of paper.
Five?
And we had to practice our speeches a lot.
And then we picked out our costume.
And seven?
Then we performed.
So a lot goes into all of these steps to get to number seven, like they mentioned. And then a little bit about who our characters are and about what they enjoyed about the wax museum project. Want to introduce yourself?
My name's Hadley and I, my character is Dolly Carton. And my favorite part was picking out the book. And the reason I picked this character is is my teacher's favorite singer.
My name is Ellen Blazer. And the character I picked was Derek Jeter. My favorite part was performing. And why I picked him was because I like baseball.
My name's Miles. I'm Albert Einstein. My favorite part was writing the speech. The reason why I chose him was because he's smart.
And for those of you that have never been to our wax museum, it is a full house. Students spread out throughout the gym at the elementary school, the hallways, that commons area. And people can go up and press their button and our characters come to life. And they give their speech for you all to learn about the person that they chose. And so if you haven't been, we invite you to next year's wax museum as our third graders just performed a couple of weeks ago. We had a great, great turnout. Again, one of our favorite traditions at the elementary school. So with that being said, we will have Albert Einstein share.
Hello, my name is Albert Einstein. I was born in Ulm, Germany in 1879. When I was a child, I did not do well in school. In fact, I got kicked out. I like to play the violin. I am famous for creating the atomic bomb and creating the equation E equals mc squared. I changed the world by creating the atomic bomb to end World War II. An obstacle I overcame was being accused and declared as a spy, so people tried to kill me. Fun fact, I became very famous, but I did not like all the attention. An inspiring quote of mine was from an idea that does not first seem to say there is no hope. I died in Princeton, New Jersey in 1955. This is your local library to learn more about me.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Derek Jeter. I was born in Peckham, New Jersey, 1974. When I was a child, I joked around and got in trouble a lot. I'm famous because I am the 28th player with 3,000 hits. I changed the world by inspiring players to follow the rules of baseball. An obstacle I overcame was diving for a grounder and I broke my ankle. A fun fact about me is that I would eat a peanut butter and jelly sandwich before every game. An inspiring quote mine was, "You're going to fail more than you'll succeed." Today, I am 50 years old. Please visit your local library to learn more about me.
Hi, my name's Black Porter. I was born on January 19, 1946, in Moncentre, Tennessee. When I was a child, my mom made me quinceañera and my dad made me woodcut twos. I'm famous for winning 10 Grammy Awards and 10 Country Associates. I changed the world by opening an imagination library for kids in need. An obstacle I came with poor and bullies. A fun fact about me, I started playing music in church at age six and began writing songs to age seven. Famous quote of mine is, "The way I see it, if you want the rainbow, you got to fight the rain." Today, I am 79 years old. Please visit your local library to learn more about me.
So again, we welcome you to next year's wax museum at the elementary. Questions for our guest speakers today?
Did very well, and I've been to the wax museums and they are a wonder. You just, you have to make one if you haven't.
Thank you. Great, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the next school's presentation.
So we have had lots of students engaged in CTE classes and make some pretty incredible products over the time this year. And I wanted to invite a group of students to come forward and to talk a little bit about the things that they have been working on and the things that they've accomplished this year. So I'm going to invite them up. Mr. P is also here to help kind of orchestrate and organize. So they're going to come forward here and show you some of the awesome stuff that they've been working on.
One of the things we built in late class in CTE is we build a lot of duck and goose calls. I'd make the sound on them right now, but I don't do them justice. I can't blow a short reed goose call. But the ones we do, they're fabulous. So Augie was the first one. When did we start this? We figured out?
Just before COVID, like right at the start of COVID, end of 2019, beginning of 2020 school year there.
On the Fridays, they could come in and work for a day. And so him and we had cheap little blades and we upgraded those and then we just moved on and stuff like that. But they come in every Friday and they do this, and it's just a lot. I mean, they were good at it. So if you, if you look at them, so Augie didn't make all these. In fact, I don't think Augie made any of those. Mine's all at home. And that's one of the problems when we, when we were asked to send, get some people here. It's like, we still got a project here. And we did, you know, they've all taken them home and stuff like that. So it was like, take them out, bring them from home, and we did get some brought from home. But Augie, so they started, started doing the duck and goose calls. And on this, a lot of times we'll take the wood, we'll add some acrylic to it, and then they lay them down on there. And this one over here, this is a goose call. It's a short reed goose call. And if you've ever, if you have a hunter in the family or something like that, they're worth big bucks. I mean, they actually are. So we start them out, when they start, the first thing you're going to make a wooden one and they don't like me. And so then they add some acrylic on there and it turns out good. Augie, okay, plug ears if you have to, because Augie's going to get just how good they sound on there. Pressure's on. Duck call. This is perfect. Honestly, I mean, they, Augie's really good too. I mean, we used to, in fact, there's people that have bought lakes and stuff like that. And they do their own business and stuff like this. Bird, turkey call. So you can see, he made one. Do you want the whole story on the turkey calls or not? So he was supposed to have two of them here today. All of a sudden, I gave him like five days to get the other one in here. So then there was a big argument today. Well, how are we going to get that here? P, I got this one. So in turn, he should sing the national anthem. But you can show them that. You can walk, send those babies around so they can see them and stuff. And send that one around. So if you look at it, he's got, first make the click on it. Oh, he's nervous. And that's the turkey call. And so this one is all out of acrylic. So he had some other project that was left over and he poured it in a form. Pete, those are mine, all right, whatever. And but he made a wooden one. And it was wood that we made from like this stuff that's from the sawmill when we get it here. And he glued it together beautiful. So he started this, what grade? Last year. Last year's, wasn't it? And he made them. He's, used to sell them and stuff like that, but they're fabulous. I have a video of him taking it apart. And he made one for me. He goes, Pete, I want to glue this. No, you're not. Because I liked showing them how much it was milled and stuff like that. So the reason that started, so I asked an old guy that was in charge of a business, one of those classes that we had a long time ago. He goes, or I asked, why, what do you look for in a worker? And the guy goes, he sat back and there's a guy that had five, exactly, he had about 100 people in the workforce. He goes, I want someone with a machinist frame of mind. And that's what these folks are doing. All right, so we got Augie. Sam, start your stuff around this, okay, names going right down the line here. Ready, go. Grade school? Grace Thomas, there you go. August Vander Rice. Peyton Nemish.
Bill Larson.
Alexi Stone.
Hannah Mansel.
Almost forgot that. All right, all the way around. All right, so just start your stuff around.
Yep, so this is a cedar one with deer antler handle. And then these are all tap handles. These four are not mine, but this one is.
For the new brewery. Brew beer handles.
And then these two are layered bowls, and this is wood from the sawmill.
There were supposed to be other people here today. Some of them are down at the, it's a busy spring right now. There's stuff going on down at the elementary school.
This is the bowl I made from the wood from the sawmill. Top's made. This is the other bowl. There's some acrylic in the middle of it.
Tell you what, take one minute, come to the center here so you're on the camera. This, this is pretty amazing for anybody that isn't here.
Yeah, exactly.
Can we send them? I mean, can we send them? You set them on the table, you're all right.
I want to buy them in tables.
All right, so the person with that was Olivia Maslin. All right, when did you start that? So she started this one. And if you look at it, you almost got to come up here and take a look at it. So this is the first one we ever made at school that I know of. And so she had to make the frame on it. She has to use the tape on there and stuff like that. And then the other day, we're talking, she says, oh, I'd make them and sell them. Why didn't you tell me? So she's, how many of you sold these books? All right, so she showed me all the pictures and stuff. So the one on the right, she made completely at home. This one was the first one. It was you and Chloe Cole. But they, here they are, just little buttons, and they're going like crazy. It was just fun. Messed like you wouldn't believe, but they just stayed on it, stayed on it, stayed on it. And so that's black walnut and stuff. So you look at the signs and stuff down there. So one of the things about getting the sawmill, and the reason, when we got that in, one of the good things about it, you know, it used to be where we would be afraid a little bit to ask on something like this. But you ask, and the easy thing to say no, as a school board member, it's easy to say no. Might as well, whatever. But the tough thing to do is to say yes. And then that, you know, opens up a whole lot of stuff for them. All right, girls, right up here, show them some of the stuff. This one is supposed to go to me at one time. Oh, Pete, you can have this. All of a sudden, then they claim it for themselves. I just go ahead and go and show them. This is a plant. Where'd you get the plant? Tractor supplies, you got it in blooms or something. It's a succulent and stuff like that, but just cute little stuff. These are actually out of branches. So we cut down a tree. Anything that's as big around as your elbow or bigger, we save it. And then it gets, we have a battle at my place and whatever is about where it's going to be stored is, and whatever. And so I bring it in now and again, and we use all this stuff. But it's just cute little stuff that they build, all kinds of stuff on this. I just take it out there and show everybody, take it around, start it around. All right. All right, Peyton, you got something that, so one of the problems with all this from the, from the industrial tech right now is we don't have an industrial tech class going on right now. There's one for the house building that they also had this past spring. Peyton will talk, talk on that. Like Owen, were you in, were you in on this one? Awesome. All right.
So we have a class where basically, we'll do a few worksheets, make sure we can measure and do all that. But then most of it is just you're building a model house out of basically popsicle stick sized boards. And you'll get a blueprint and you'll have a group of four people. Me and Emmett were in a group. And we finished this in half a quarter, I think.
It's a ton of work. And watch them. It's a ton of work. They're battling back and forth. You got there, oh, no, you did not. And then they're, we're at the end and it's, I don't think it's humorous, but it's like, you see now, you see, settle. Go ahead, cap's always down and stuff, so. A pretty darn cool, that's for sure. Put that on the middle so it's on camera. All right, so we're, a couple of girls were sent by Mrs. Butch's class, ladies.
Yeah. So we like did a few worksheets on like what type of flowers they are and like where they should be set up in like arrangement. So we learned about like where it should be set up in our arrangement. And then we just started doing arrangements and it's sometimes it's nice because like, like we start doing arrangements right around like Easter and Mother's Day. So we got to give it away to like family members and everything. So I just like, the flowers normally don't get really, we got much about it, but I guess, I don't know. We, we have like four more arrangements and they're like bigger arrangements. But we've done small little ones like this and maybe one or two worksheets about like pricing and how to sell the flowers and how to like upsell them and whatever, in like the right legal way, so.
Very good.
Am I sitting in the middle?
Yes. Can they pass that around?
Yeah.
And then there are some people from art. So there's dual purpose people here, down here and over there.
Chris Weller recruited us to talk about how we made some of our art projects in the Innovation Center. This one's probably one of my favorites because it's useful. And it took a lot of work to make it, but they always turned out really good. So basically, we just had to prime a cup and then we hydro dipped it with some spray paint and some letter. And then after that, we were able to go back to the Innovation Center and use our new engraving machine and engrave whatever we want. I just engraved CNA and my name on it. And then after that, we put acrylic on it. And wait a few days for the acrylic to dry, but it turns out really good and it's really nice and.
Another thing that we did was we got these shirts. And we went down to the Innovation Center and used the cricket sticker machine. And you print it out or you cut out just your design. And then you went back into the art room and then you used bleach. And you put a board in between the shirt and you sprayed it with bleach outside. And then you left it for a few minutes and then you washed it off. And then it looks really cool. And we have a few different ones. I made that one. We have farmerly ones. And a cool mop. Small pants down. And then this one is mushroom. Really cool. This is another one of my favorite projects we made in innovative art. So we basically just got a piece of wood shaped like Minnesota. And then we had to stain it or paint it, whatever you want. And we took it down to the Glowforge and we scored it so we could put our design on there. And then we just put our nails as we wanted to around the design. And then just put your string and whatever colors you like. I actually made a coin for my dad. He's a lineman, so it would look like the guy finding a power bar.
Then another one we did was Glowforge scene. So you went down to the Innovation Center and you had to use the computer. And it was actually really difficult to get these all the right size and shape. And a lot of people did hunting. I did Star Wars because I really like Star Wars. And then it just, it's like a 3D model thing. And then you painted it afterwards with either watercolor or.
This is one of our more simpler projects that we did. So this is actually for the eighth grade classes. But we had to engrave, I think Nina actually took this from Glowforge and did all this for us. And then I just used paint markers to do all that. And then we just kind of used the wood grain and made more designs. So something a little simpler for the younger kids to start working with those types of things. And then another thing we did was we went down to the Innovation Center and we made a pond that has three different levels to it. And then you use a hot glue gun to make the water fall for it. And then you would resin the inside. And I actually, I'll be honest, my resin, I didn't measure it correctly. So I just had to use a lot of super glue to get it to look nice. This one, they did the resin right, and it looks really good. So then you, back in the art room, made four different animals out of clay. And then you hot, you could hot glue like moss to it, like or sand or rocks or different things. So both. And I also really enjoyed this one, but we just did some resin in a picture frame. And then we took a picture that's like a different point of view. So she obviously made the leaf look really big. And you could use whatever objects you wanted. That would, you could do whatever you want. Have some creative freedom with that. And then for this one, it's a sea shell where you put resin in the middle. And you, this time, when I did the shell, my resin worked. So you put color in it and make it like a sea color. And then you mixed glue with sand and you made it look really nice. Then you could put different seashells and different things. And then you had to make one object that fit in with the project. So in here, they did sandals and then they beaded the line itself, which is really cool.
We're going to be in trouble for this one. Before you guys all leave, I think you should all come down and look into the camera there before.
There's a couple more things that they had. But that they made in jewelry class. Also, most in the Innovation Center using the Glowforge, they made little hats, tags. Laser engraved on leather. Some made tags for a baseball hat. That's a bigger project where they make an actual wallet, also out of leather with the Glowforge. And then they do this. We make stamps as they make jewelry throughout the quarter. We try to have a nice little display for the jewelry. So everybody kind of creates their own little brand. And then we actually make stamps that they can just brand all their projects with. Make little keychains. Keychains are a big thing. Little earrings. And then they also have to come up with a little good cause project where they make a jewelry set for whatever their cause is. So as you see, all these projects are pretty advanced once they get up to high school. They get into more inventing things and designing things on their own. The sixth graders, they learn how to use the machines. But we have one sixth grader who really got into the designing part and spent quite a few blocks on making a design for a basketball shirt. So first, and she made a sticker out of it too, so it's not just a shirt.
So we have projects that we have to do in the Innovation Center. And one of the projects was that we had to design a sticker. And what started off as a sticker, well, it was done and I asked Nina for help on how to print it. And she said, oh yeah, wow, that's really cool. And she asked me if I wanted to make it on a shirt. So this is the back of the shirt. And that's the front. But those are just some of the cool projects we get to make in the Innovation Center for sixth grade and.
Yeah, there is like no copyright on there. That's like per design, 100%.
Perfect. Are, are there any questions for any of our CTE students here today?
So if y'all wouldn't mind kind of walk through, give a little wave to the camera on your way around so that everybody can see the, because this really is very cool opportunity. So thank you. Come on, round, give a little wave. Perfect. Thank you so much. Thank you for sharing your talents and your time.
Have a good day, guys. Thank you.
John, do you need a, my fingers are sticky as well. We take just a 30 second. I don't want to get my.
Thank you.
I'm just thoroughly jealous that you have anything like that when I was in.
Girl, there's always time to go back.
That's true.
Okay, Chris, can you grab the door?
All right, so then I just want to express a huge thank you to everybody that presented. That was amazing, amazing work. So we'll move on to communication items.
So we're going to mix it up a little bit. So we're going to go elementary. And then actually, Mr. Austin Kirk is chauffeuring the elementary students back to school. So we're going to have our buildings and grounds right after elementary. But Cassie, do you want to come and share what's going on at the elementary? In addition to what we've already had an opportunity to.
Thank you. In the last month or so and the last 11 days of school. And my cheeks hurt from smiling from all of the presentations, from the elementary students to the secondary students. And I think it's very timely that I start off with the recognition and appreciation. We just celebrated Teacher Appreciation Week last week, School Lunch Hero Day, and our school nurse. And I think of all of the adults, you know, within our school system that helped these things come to fruition. And so very neat to have that opportunity. And I just wanted to call out those special groups as we recognized them most recently. We have our fifth grade music program and graduation coming up as we get ready to send our fifth graders over here to the secondary. I'd like to thank Mr. Askinson and his group of students for hosting our fifth grade orientation last week where our students came over and met various student groups and got to know the building and some staff and had a little Q and A session as well. I know that was well received by our, our fifth graders. Our fifth graders also got to participate in Math Masters. That is. Um, that is another strong tradition at the elementary school. Sending um some of our fifth grade students, uh they went to Alexandria where we had a couple of students placed, um so that information is up there. But a huge congratulations were through teams that represented our elementary school at the Math Masters contest. So very neat. Um, also our Bulldog Spotlight students for the month of April, um showing that they are mindful, connected, and respectful. You can see all the smiles in that picture. Um, again, super excited as they come down to the office to get their certificate. And we have a mini celebration in the hallway and um honor, honor the work that they do um each and every day. And then with um springtime comes our spring benchmarking, um which gives us the opportunity to look at our growth from fall to winter to spring in the areas of math and reading. And so we use that data to help um guide our instruction and decision making um for the remainder of this year, but also looking ahead uh to next year. So we're wrapping that up as well. Um, a big shout out to our MTSS staff um who uh administer the one-to-one assessments where they pull students and um administer those, those tests. It's a lot of work and it's a big time commitment, um but it's great data that we get to use. And then um with that, I just want to make sure to call out uh personal learning plans will be shared with families. Uh, the last couple of days of school, we'll send those homeless students. So families can know kind of where we ended um with our power half hour efforts and also provide some summer reading um opportunities and strategies for families to work on um to promote reading over the summer. That will be included in there as well. May is a busy month um at the elementary. And I just want to remind the families that um our special activities, our field trips and different unique opportunities is all because of our fundraising efforts that took place in the fall. Um, transportation is a big piece and also uh tickets, you know, that get us into the special places. Um, our fundraising efforts are able to give those opportunities to our students. Looking ahead, our last day of school is Wednesday, May 28th. And then shortly after that, um we will be submitting the School of Excellence application. Um, you've heard me talk about that um at previous board meetings, I think back in February. And so we're wrapping up our application process, um which again really focuses on the journey um of excellence and that continuous improvement at the elementary level. Uh, so looking forward to submitting that. Field day today and tomorrow for our elementary students. And again, thank you to secondary students who are over there helping facilitate those small groups. If um hopefully families can come join us and see their kiddos in action.
Any questions or things for me?
All right, so just bypassing a little bit, Ken, come on up and uh let us know what's happening with buildings and grounds. I'm sure there's a lot of dust under your feet right about now. That's the standing joke of the year, I think.
Yeah, everybody in administration been talking about that. Uh, so I had a little weird one the other, just a couple of weeks ago. We had a broken wire under the cement that ran the dishwasher in the kitchen. Um, so it actually just dried it right off. Uh, luckily there was an extra one in the conduit when they built it. So we uh were able to just do that. But with that, it did take the dishwasher with it. And so Dennis told me that, he says, well, that phased out. It did run when we hooked it up correctly, but it only lasted about a week. And he's like, yeah, it's not gonna last long in my mind. So we'll be putting a new dishwasher, uh dishwasher, yeah. Garbage is horrible, garbage is horrible, sorry. So um we were able to get that air testing done for that oil leak at the elementary over spring break. So I, I haven't heard anything. So waiting for them results, hopefully they come back and just hopefully done. It'd be nice to take that off the plate. Um, sprinkler system over here has been a bear this year. I had to do uh some crunching of my own and with a shovel and dig up some lines and replace and so on. But uh the good news is that actually after I got the first half all running, the second half went smooth. So after like, oh my God, I'm gonna tear this thing out and whatever. Now then, everything came around and running real good now. So um and then from a long time back here, I had an air handler choked way down because the shaft of the bearing out in the middle and the shaft was wore out. And we actually got that pulled, pulled it up, new bearings in it. And it's close, I gotta put the pulleys on a line, I'm painting everything up. And uh we should be able to run that one without any, so that should be all done and taken care of. Um, and then they got started on the roof. Uh, Friday they brought it in, sold it off on Friday. But you got a really good start yesterday and they do not waste any time up there. They are moving right along. So that's basically what I got. Any questions?
So the air handler, where you fixed it, um what would that cost more?
That bearing or the, well, the bearings alone are 200 bucks.
The unit, is that a 50, 100, 1000 dollar unit?
Yeah.
See, I like this idea of fixing it when it's just a bearing. It doesn't mean it all has to be replaced. I appreciate that a lot because I'm trying to spend money on the kids instead of stuff like that.
It, it, yeah, the shaft too, even the shaft. So I, I usually took that stuff to staying. And when I brought him that shaft, it was eight feet long, two and a half inches around. It was heavy. And he's like, uh, yeah, he says, I'm sorry, Kim, but I can't. I'm so flunked with my own work. He goes, I can't do it. So I ended up having to run it to Teal and Machine in Eden Valley. And they did a nice job on it too. They welded it all up, laid it down, looked awesome, went together smooth, so.
Well, I got an air handler back that's gonna run for a lot of years. And again, we've got the money with the kids rather than throwing away trying to replace old thing. And that's not including getting them down and getting them back up again, probably.
Yeah.
Good job.
Anything else?
All right. Kiddles from charity to weeks. Thank you.
Thank you guys for all you do.
All right, we'll go up to uh Secondary Principal and hear what's happening at the, with Jesse at the secondary.
Well, good afternoon, everybody. Um, some things, uh, some things happened in the last month here. So uh we celebrated Teacher Appreciation Week, uh School Lunch Hero Day and School Nurse Day. Just uh incredibly thankful for our, our wonderful caring staff and, and what they do for kids every day, you know. Um, uh, they move mountains around here and I'm, I'm very thankful for them. So uh we had, Cassie mentioned it, but we had fifth grade orientation last Friday. Uh, so what that looks like is fifth graders come over here. We have a track and field day where they uh go out and participate in track and field day with our sixth graders. And then they come into the building, they eat lunch with the sixth graders so that they get to know how the lunchroom works. So they get to know our lunch lines and our milk machines. And then they get to, our SAD students take them around on a tour of the building. They go to different places where people talk to them. Jen talks to them about attendance stuff and, and things like that. And then they get to have a chance to try out some locker combinations. So they're not so nervous coming over. That's a, a big fear about moving over here to the secondary building is those locker combinations. And then afterwards, we all go to the auditorium in which we have students from every grade level. And the sixth graders get a chance to ask some questions. And they, um, our SAD students are the ones that put that on and organized that. And I'm just really thankful to them for all they did for organizing just a really incredible event for our fifth graders. So um thanks for the SAD for putting that on. So nice to have the fifth graders here and it'll be exciting to have them over here full time next year. Uh, we didn't have prom last weekend. I do want to say a big thanks to Gina Pung, who is our prom advisor. And so she puts in countless hours to prepare this uh event for students, uh for creating memorable experiences. And so also a big thank, prom is not a, a small move. And so it takes a lot of people and so there are people parking cars, there are people chaperoning. Uh, there are people running the sea, uh the all night uh after prom. And so just thanks to everybody who helped out with that as well. Um, looking forward, we have, uh after today, we have 10 days of school left and we have a lot packed into those 10 days of school here. And I, I just wanted to touch on a little bit. So tomorrow we have our uh fun on the Sunday in the afternoon. Students uh eat lunch and then they go outside and we get to do yearbook signings. And just a kind of a place to celebrate, the high school students get to celebrate together as a, as a high school. We have on Friday morning, we have our Dollars for Scholars breakfast where we recognize our scholarship recipients. Uh, then on Sunday, we have our Senior Honors banquet. Uh, then next week on Tuesday, we have graduation practice. And that's where we uh officially say goodbye to the seniors. That's their last day. Uh, then we have middle school update on May 22nd, graduation on May 23rd. And then the last day of the 24, 25 school year, May 28th. So just a lot of things packed in here to the end of the school year. But uh it'll be an exciting and fun time here at the secondary, so.
Questions from Mr. Askinson?
I'll say, again, as you said, thanks to the SAD and everybody else who put on the fifth grade. Starting the fifth grade coming over to the sixth grade next year. And I know him and a whole bunch of his friends were extremely nervous.
Yeah.
There just, the anxiety is kind of through the roof. And I, after Friday, I almost sensed a level of calmness, a little bit more calmness. Of course, there's gonna be some anxiety still next year. But uh it was well put together. They, they uh, they kind of really relaxed after.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and um Chris, let's hear what's happening in the community. Uh, another uh sure dust under the feet type of uh, I know you're coming into the busy season. So let's hear what's happening.
Good afternoon. Well, we are getting ready for summer. So we're busy with just preparing for everything that's just coming up. And someone just asked me, oh, are you all ready? And I'm like, I always think I am. And then that first week hits and I'm like, oh, we forgot this. Or we're just running around, but trying to get as prepared as possible. Um, most of our softball and baseball uh traveling programs have started. So they're getting, they're trying to get in between the activities, trying to get on the field and start doing some practicing. And then they'll start their kind of travel competitions in June and July. Um, we, like I said, we're getting ready for summer. And I'm noticing that um we are getting a little bit more, people are coming and registering. And I think they are realizing that there's only two weeks of school left and they sign their kids up for stuff. And they're like, oh, so we're seeing a little surge on registrations here in these last two weeks. Um, so hopefully they won't wait too much longer and they can get, get things done. We added uh Play in a Week, uh Great Theater. It's gonna be The Lion, the Witch and the Wardrobe. So uh unfortunately, this did not make it in our catalog. They didn't get back to me. Our catalog had already went out. So we're trying to promote this, you know, through social media, through newsletters that the, that the principals put out and um target marketing. So I've been kind of grabbing emails of people that have been in our prior programs and just saying, did you know? Would you be interested? So we need to get, I'd like to have 20 kids. We're, we have about five right now. So we have a ways to go, but it isn't until July. So hopefully we'll get a few more registrations. Um, PAWS program starts June 2nd, goes through August 15th on May 29th. So we're starting right away. So we have to turn over the rooms in two days. So on the 29th and 30th, we are organizing rooms, cleaning up. We have to move rooms because they need to clean our rooms first. So we have to move it all out and get it into different rooms. And then they'll clean our rooms and then we'll move back. So a little bit crazy at first, but um, you know, we'll be going through that. We also have all of our staff um doing training. So everyone's being required to take CPR on first aid. And then we will also have some in-person and online trading around PDIS. Uh, Mike is gonna come in and do a, that's geared for our daycare, geared to child uh school age care. He's gonna talk about positive behavior interventions that we can use as tools. And then we'll also have, we'll be talking about policies, procedures, uh safety, mandated reporting. All of those things will be in our trading um over those two days. Um, early childhood, we have Big Truck Night. I think I reported last time. That's from 5 to 7, really hoping we don't get rained out. So we'll see. It's more to come on that, but the trucks are lined up. Uh, staff will be there. Uh, Gerald is helping me out this, this evening. So we'll have lots of people at the, at the playground. Um, playground projects, we have raised uh $140,000. Um, and we are waiting for uh just our, our sales rep to get back to us about uh port in place trails. To see what, how much and how big those trails can be um with the money that we have. So we're, we're waiting to hear about that. We still have the tentative date of June 23rd for our community build. And I just wanted to, you know, uh just extend my gratitude to the Playground Committee, past and present. You know, someone had to have the dream and then, and then the others that helped brought it to fruition. Um, and also like the National Honor Society, their uh efforts when they went and asked all the local organizations. They got the word out on that uh end of the uh spectrum and they did a fantastic job. Um, I think they're, uh, they had a matching uh uh donation from the Legion. And I think we figured that they were raised close to $10,000 by just asking, um, asking, uh, or going out to the local organizations. So and, and going out and making those presentations also led to other, others going on and making their own efforts to come in and donate. So we're, we're grateful to the National Honor Society. So it's certainly been a team effort. It is, you know, that it took to get us here. So I'm looking forward to get the build and, and uh, you know, have a playground in the fall. So I'm excited. Everybody's excited for that. So we're, so that's the status. Um, preschool coming to the end and much like all the, what everyone is talking about. It's just fun to see the kids as they started from the beginning of the school year, lots of crying and, you know, not sure about being here to now almost go to, we're going to kindergarten or it's already. You know, like I just went over there today for about half an hour and they, I, I don't see them as often. I'm gonna have to get over there a little more because they all have to tell me everything. I'm like, okay, just take turns. So um, but there is just fun to see them uh change throughout the year. So. And then for the um 25, 26 preschool, we're still, you know, we still have some spots available. It's starting to fill out. We will be back to what we were two years ago with uh morning sections of three-year-olds. Um, and that would be two sections and then three sections of four-year-olds. So we're, we're uh filling those out and, you know, but there's room if there's others that have, you know, forgotten or slept until the last minute. Pack, pack is busy, as you've heard. We had prom, after prom, we have upcoming graduation ceremony that will all be in the field house. Um, so it's nice to see that the field house is used in multiple ways. Other things that are coming up over the summer, we, we'll have camps and clinics. Uh, our sport clinics will have a couple of breakdown tournaments that for volleyball and one for uh basketball. And the car and craft show, the Chapere, that on in August. Um, and as I was walking down here, I'll say add it to the notes. But um, we have one of our alumni, newly alumni, uh Jasmine Rindall will be uh directing a community play, Pride and Prejudice. Uh, there is uh tryouts next week. Um, and we are partnering with the Community Theater. So um, so that is uh coming up for the summer. So the auditorium, the auditorium is gonna be busy. We, not only will that, that play be there, Great Theater Camp. Um, I part, we partnered with the library. Um, and they have a number of events they bring into the community. So they're uh bringing um uh a couple of shows and we are bringing a couple of shows. So we have like five different items that you can, for free, that you can come to the auditorium and come participate in. So it's uh, it's busy and a lot going on here, so.
Questions?
I know, and I didn't even talk about the concerts of the park.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on to budget review.
Okay. Well, this is not nearly as exciting. It's our budget, however, um it's a, it's a necessity. There we go. Uh, so a couple of things, um, I just included. So this is the, a document that we've seen over the course of years. And it's kind of the preliminary driving force um that the business manager uses. And, and so Kerry has been working over, been working with Amanda as, as Kerry's transitioning out and Amanda's transitioning in. So again, really just kind of tracking year over year, our revenue expenditures and our fund balance. Um, the data that's on here is data. Um, the data that's on here is data that you've seen um, in my previous presentations, but this is our general aid allocation. Um, you, you do see that, oh, let me cast this, sorry, so that people, as I'm saying, as you see this, I can highlight where I'm talking about. Um, so this first section right here is talking about the general ed formula. This is the area that's indexed and when I, so when I talk about the general ed formula, this is what the, the seven thousand two hundred and forty-eight dollars and fifty cents, that's how much we get per student in base aid, okay? Um, and that is what, that is what the two point seven four percent increase. When I talk about its index for inflation, that was a big, uh, big win for us last legislative session. Um, not gonna lie, it's under some scrutiny uh, for future, um, for future years. And it's a huge concern because it was a cushion for school districts so that we would be guaranteed um, no less than two and a guarantee for the state that it would be no greater than three. So um, you, you see that for uh, this upcoming fiscal year, it's two point seven four percent based on the inflationary index. Uh, we'll see where it ends up um, in future years, but that's what we are counting on for uh, the next year. Um, you're gonna see that we are not uh, transferring money into the designated for operating capital. Uh, we've done that the last couple of years to be able to um, tackle some of the larger projects that we've had ongoing. Um, and then you're gonna see that uh, just some other uh, in the revenue, we've got an increase in compensatory revenue slightly. Um, that is an anomaly for our school district. You're going to hear across the state of Minnesota, there are many school districts who are losing compensatory revenue. So it's, it's an area that I continue to watch really closely to make sure that as formula, as formulas change, we don't end up on a losing end of, of a change in that um, compensatory formula. When you look at expenditures, a couple of things that uh, we have not um, taken into account a whole lot besides just the steps for our staff. Um, because this is a negotiating year, we don't know what our contracts are going to be. Um, so what you, when you see that four percent, that really is, is kind of an average of the steps on our teacher's salary schedule, which is the largest um, bargaining unit within uh, within our organization. Um, you know, it's uh, something to be aware of is when you take a look up at the uh, general at eight of two point seven four and you know that uh, it's about four percent, we're gonna have some conversations and negotiations between each of the units um, and the board. So that's yet to come. You're also going to see that uh, one of the areas that, and I think today's presentation was a really nice reminder of um, what we have for our students. Um, and what we have for our students takes tools and it takes equipment and it's not um, cheap equipment. And so we are making plans for a replacement cycle and making sure that we're able to use some of our funds to replace the equipment, not just to support the staff. So we're making some strategic movements to make sure that we are able to replace the machinery, the equipment, the supplies, um, and, and make sure that those things, these opportunities remain for our kids. Um, so some of the assumptions, and we've talked a little bit about these, um, and, and they're gonna be on the next document as well. So salary increase is not adding new money right now, it's just for the, the steps. Um, there is an increase built in for the paid family leave. Uh, now again, for us as a school district, we're counting on that for half of the school year um, because it takes effect as of January of twenty twenty-six, so that's, that's built in. Um, it should be noted that that is a cost not only for us as a district, it is going to be a cost for employees as well. It'll be a, a shared cost and um, that's a, a negotiated item at this point in time. Uh, you're going to see, um, this is anticipating um, an Adsys approval for, we've talked about um, adding a math focus. We've done a lot of emphasis on our reading, so we've talked about bringing in some focus on math. I have still not heard from the uh, Department of Education regarding our application, but as soon as I do, I'll bring that information forward to the board. Um, the other thing that I, I wanna just um, draw some attention to is um, one of the things that, and it's not, it's, it's an assumption that we need to be cognizant of and, and continue to be aware of is uh, with the READ Act, and we've talked a lot about how prepared we have been for the READ Act. Um, in the last couple of weeks, um, I wish uh, some information came to um, me and our, our principals that was not, um, we weren't aware of. And um, I can, I can safely say my colleagues weren't either. So um, there's a, a requirement for us to uh, do a level of screening for all students in grades four through twelve. Uh, you'll hear we've done a lot in grades four through ten and four through nine, but this is four through twelve that are not reading at grade level. And there's a very specific uh, tool that we have to use. Um, and we're working through what that means for us. But when we looked at the pure data of um, of what our numbers say, that's a lot of individualized assessment. And you heard Cassie talk a little bit about how um, that um, multi-tiered systems of support, the MTSS team, does this at the elementary, this is in addition to. Um, so we're, we're, I'm not gonna lie, I had a little bit of a fall off my chair moment because it kind of came out. Where did this come from, right? So the reason I bring that forward with the literacy specialist is because that's a requirement that we've known about. We've known that in twenty-five, twenty-six, we do have to have somebody who is designated as our literacy specialist and it's really about implementing the READ Act, right? Um, and uh, one of the things that we're, we're contemplating is how are we gonna do both? How are we gonna implement the READ Act and do this additional assessment piece? Well, we have a number of, of moving parts throughout the district that have come into play. We've been talking about our professional learning communities, which are part of our teacher development and evaluation process. We've been talking about QCOM and you'll see that uh, QCOM is, um, that's an assumption as well. Um, QCOM is uh, is a group of teacher leaders who help to uh, really facilitate um, some of the uh, the flex hours that our, our profession, our staff have. Um, they work on um, some teacher leadership opportunities with mentorship. Um, but there's a leader within that QCOM and so could we, we're taking a look administratively is, is there a way that we could recommend combining some of these positions? And I don't have an answer or a solid recommendation at this point in time, but I just want you to know, those are some of the assumptions that we're paying attention to as we're developing the budget, to look at what the best way is to try to meet the, the needs of the mandates and continue the movement forward that our district has been talking about. So more to come on that, all right? So um, so I'm gonna stop presenting this document and then I'm gonna go to the one that is gonna be familiar because we've looked at it um, in previous uh, board meetings, and it is just the budget assumptions. Um, and really, there's not a lot that has changed on this, except I just wanted to kind of um, update you on where things are at. Um, because some of these moving parts have to happen before, you know, we actually get an approved budget as of, by June thirtieth. So as a, for instance, the reduction of the fourth grade section, that has happened, that happened at our last board meeting. Um, we've talked about um, the high needs with our special education preschool and our uh, our bubble of students that are, are in our upper elementary, that position is posted. Um, we've got uh, the, uh, consideration of the uh, math, MTSS, the multi-tiered systems of support. It's not yet approved, so that one has not, nothing has been happening there. Um, the realignment of, as I talked about, um, transitioning Amanda into business manager, that position is post, those, that position is posted along with the technology assistant who we, uh, when you think back to Mr. Wolf, who was the um, who was the uh, tech integrationist, the, the buildings have been talking with their teams, working with Leah Michaelis to find out what is necessary, what's the best level of support. So her, the assistant to support the technology department is posted. So those are just some updates that you see are posted and where those are at. Um, this is the new information that is really about, um, that I just referenced, uh, that's gonna be the, the newest bit of information on this document. But it really is about how we are going to work through um, the, the CAPD assessment for students who are um, performing below grade level in reading in grades four through twelve. Some of the unanswered questions that are coming along with that are if we screen ninth graders and then they pass, we have to do it every year? We don't know the answer to that yet. Um, we don't know exactly what happens if, what, if we do the CAPD. And really, and I apologize, I, I know I, I don't like using acronyms, but I don't honestly remember what CAPD, so I'm gonna have to look it up because it's what it was, was called to me, was CAPD, so I gotta look it up, but um, but I don't know exactly what, it is, it's a dyslexia screener and, and that's really the intent behind it. But the now what has not been clear to us, so we're working on that, or again. So what that does for me as a superintendent is it, it pushes a little bit of a panic button because I don't know how to respond with information that I don't have, right? So I feel like I'm being a little bit ambiguous to you as a board to say, just a heads up, but that's really where I am right now, is just a heads up, but this is a moving, a moving part that we just don't, we don't have the definitives for right now, okay? And as soon as I get that information, I'll push that information along. I am hopeful that we'll have that by our June tenth work session so that I can be a little bit more concise in the budget implication. Um, but if not, um, that would be one of those things that we would, we would have to carry into next year and we would talk about through the revised budget process, okay? So those are just a few of the things that are, that are on the radar. Um, I'm gonna just stop and if there are any questions on that, those are really the budget updates that I have for you. Again, not a lot of changes. Um, the one piece I do want to maybe just kind of uh, call out is um, the uh, lack of movement within the legislative process. Um, right now the House is pretty stalled. Um, and to be frank, uh, one of the reasons that it is stalled is around the unemployment insurance for um, summer school employees. Um, I really, what it comes down to is the funding to support that. Um, I think the, there's a lot of um, question around making the mandate, removing the, the funding and then just having that fall back to school districts. Um, so it is a sticking point between um, members within the House. And so it's, it's not, the education omnibus bill is not moving right now. Um, so we're keeping an eye on that. Um, I, I wish I could optimistically say by Monday the nineteenth, or the nineteenth, is it midnight on the nineteenth? Do they have to adjourn? Um, I'm, I'm pretty certain that that's not gonna happen at this point in the game, but we'll find out, right? Um, a couple of other things that just to be, have on the radar, one thing that would be really good for us as a school district is um, in the Senate bill, there's a um, there's a, a proposal to um, have some additional revenue come from seasonal properties to apply for our operating referendum. Um, as you know, we have a lot of seasonal properties, um, property, um, like Cronus. So that, and I frankly, when we were going out for an operating and referendum, a lot of the homeowners that I would speak to would say, I will support this rule, but they can't, right? So um, that would be a statutory change and, and it's in the Senate bill, it's not in the House bill. Um, but there are some, there are some advocates that have um, have some connections that they're hoping they can get into the tax bill. Um, so some, some positive structure is happening there. Um, a couple of other things just to um, uh, just to uh, kind of keep an eye on is um, so we've, we've talked a little bit about, you know, the um, the index for inflation and then you also had, uh, we had um, media letter, uh, media aid and we had um, support personnel aid and we had a couple of these other little pots of money. Some of those are on the block to take back um, because of the two point seven four guaranteed index. So, and, and I know we've talked a little bit in the past about how it kind of becomes a give with one hand and you take away with the other, um, uh, but uh, we're watching that. I, I'm watching that and so as those things continue to um, move forward, um, I'll let you know what, when I know. Um, I, I try to give you updates and you all watch or, and is connected as well, but um, that's, that's what I know at this moment in time for the budget, so. So that's what I have.
All up, questions, any comments? Okay, moving on to request for information around table.
Uh, yesterday, the uh, West Central Ed District, uh, we had our meeting. Moving forward with, with a lot of great things, uh, the sale house, uh, we approved the signing of the lease uh, for another year, which is gonna be very beneficial for, we start community here and the uh, uh, the young adults that are in the sale program and what they've been doing throughout the, this year, the, the first year that kicked us off uh, within the community and places that they worked at. Uh, and uh, so that, that is good news. Uh, there will be two of them uh, completing the sale program this year, but they also have two others coming in for the twenty uh, five, twenty-six school year. So still keep uh, the sale program as far as the students that are faulting that at ten. And uh, right now that is the, the, the most they could handle with the house that they have. Um, so, so good on that, uh, sale did, uh, the students did have uh, a uh, drive sale last week as part of the community drive sales, so they were very excited about that. Uh, and then they also were able to get out and do drive sale in themselves. So uh, it's past time to us that they were out buying gifts for other people, especially for Mother's Day. Uh, as far as the, the rest of uh, the W uh, uh, C uh, West Central Ed District, WCEB, uh, they have a graduation for the ALC, uh, five nineteen of Melrose. And so there'll be stu- two students leaving, uh, they're graduating. And uh, we did sign the uh, the budget for the twenty-five, twenty-six uh, school year. And approved it, and we approved the calendar for uh, next year, so. The twenty-five, twenty-six uh, school, so. Lots of things happened, uh, yes, last night at uh, Melrose, so.
My son, I, I like the budget stuff that you had today. Um, I like the other part where you're giving us an idea of what's coming forward. But it was like for years, we were kind of planning after the fact. And I hate that style and I think we have accomplished things in this school now because we're planning ahead, we're doing our best to budget ahead with an unknown, obviously we don't know what the state's gonna do. But you're keeping us nicely informed with estimates sometimes where it looks like we may lose funding, some of that because we have to keep it all in mind, uh, so we know where we're going, but um, all, all seems good to me.
Has there been any, any movement on the daycare situation?
Uh, tomorrow is the next uh, meeting um, for kind of the next steps planning. There's um, I think the first uh, one of the first things that's gonna be determined are kind of the um, the uh, pockets of groups to uh, distribute surveys to find out what community information is, is necessary. Um, so there's a, there's a four-hour meeting, not tomorrow, Thursday, Thursday, yep, four-hour meeting. So um, more to come on that, but uh, there hasn't been anything since the initial. Um, I, I do know that it has certainly increased conversation, so.
Thank you. All right, we adjourned.